Testing. Ah, very good. Good evening, everyone. It is time to call the November 10th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I want to thank everyone who is attending in person and those who are tuning in online. So I just want to let you know we are having some technical difficulty with our mics. I just encourage the commissioners to speak up and I will pass you the mic when it's your turn to speak. But for right now, if you can rise and just join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Elizabeth, can you call the roll, please?
Mayor Harker.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cooper.
Here.
Commissioner Gilligan.
Here.
Commissioner La Piccolo.
Here.
Commissioner Oliver. Commissioner Spiegler.
Thank you. Now, you've got an agenda in front of you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda unless there's any questions? We've got a motion on the floor. I recognize that. We've got a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye. All right, thank you. Now, we've got two proclamations, which is always my favorite because it gives us an opportunity to say thanks and to recognize important things that are in our community. The Carteret County Small Business Center is asking everyone to participate in an initiative, that's a nationwide initiative, affirming our commitment to small businesses and to shop local. In 2010, a nationwide initiative by the American Express Company encouraged people to shop small on the Saturday following Thanksgiving. This has grown into a nationwide movement and it reminds us of the importance of shopping local and keeping our dollars right here at home. So it gives me great pleasure to read the proclamation supporting Small Business Saturday in 2025. Whereas small businesses are the backbone of the town of Beaufort's economy, representing the spirit and innovation, entrepreneurship, and the community that makes Carteret County unique. And whereas small businesses create jobs, keeps dollars circulating locally, and strengthen the civic fabric of our neighborhoods through philanthropic volunteerism and public service. And whereas supporting small, independently owned businesses help preserve a distinct character of Beaufort that enhances the quality of life for residents and visitors alike. And whereas small business owners in Beaufort have demonstrated resilience, adaptability, and dedication to customer service, continuing to invest in our community's future. And whereas the Saturday following Thanksgiving has become nationally recognized as Small Business Saturday, encouraging residents to shop small and support local small businesses during the holiday season and throughout the year. And whereas the town of Beaufort seeks to join our partners across Carteret County in amplifying the call to support local merchants, makers, and service providers. Now therefore, be resolved, I Sharon E. Harker, Mayor of the Town of Beaufort, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim, November the 29th, 2025, as Small Business Saturday. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners and the citizens of Beaufort, I encourage all residents and visitors to shop small, dine locally, and share their experience to inspire others to support our community's small businesses. Let this day serve as a kickoff to a season's sustained commitment to small businesses in Beaufort and across Carteret County, duly adopted this day, the 10th of November, 2025. And we'll be sending this off to the Carteret County Small Business Center to join other proclamations that are being encouraged to do throughout the county. They also want us to take a picture. So I'm going to hold this up and if you don't mind, I want the whole entire board to be part of this picture. Everybody scoot in. Now, this next proclamation is something that's dear to my heart. In 2018, our community had been devastated by Florence. And when I took the office of mayor in 2021, the outgoing mayor had given a statistic that at that time, there were probably 140-plus people who still had not been able to return to their home. The devastation continued on throughout the years and many people were impacted, although we did not know about it. My neighbor and a close family friend of the family was one of those families. And it was a long, hard recovery for them. But without the support of other individuals coming to their aid and letting them know about organizations that could come out and help you, I believe they probably would have been living in a condition that nobody would have ever imagined anybody should live in. So fast forward, here we have Baptist on Mission Disaster Relief has come to their aid. They came to their house and made an assessment and said, I don't think we can fix this. We're going to have to tear it down. And that was a big undertaking for the Pickett family because it was their family homestead. But they took the faith of tearing it down and Baptist on Mission has put together a new chapter for this family to start after almost five, six years of living in a condition that you would not believe. So when it was time to present them with the keys, they gave me the honor of allowing me to do that. And I want to appreciate that from the Pickett family, actually. Pickets are helping with the Pickets. It just, I was just so moved that I had to say thank you to this organization. They're not looking for the thanks. They're doing this mission because it's the faith that they have and it's a good thing to do. But I think it's really important for us to say thank you when individuals take that bold step to help others. So it gives me great pleasure to present Mark and Joy Pickett, who's representing the Baptist on Mission Disaster Relief. This gift from us, this is just a small token of a greater appreciation from the town of Beaufort. And allow me to read it now. This is a proclamation recognizing Baptist on Mission Disaster Relief. Whereas Baptist on Mission is a Christ-centered organization committed to serving others in times of great need through disaster relief, building efforts, and compassionate outreach. And whereas, following the devastation of Hurricane Florence in 2018, Baptist on Mission responded swiftly and faithfully to Beaufort and surrounding communities, offering relief, recovery, and long-term assistance to families whose lives and homes were upended. And whereas, through dedicated volunteers, Baptist on Mission has demonstrated tireless compassion, providing meals, shelters, repair service, and ongoing support to families in Beaufort and across the region. And whereas their work exemplifies the very best of neighborly care, fostering resilience, hope, and healing in communities facing some of the most difficult days. And whereas the town of Beaufort recognizes the extraordinary partnership and service of Baptist on Mission, which continues to uplift families and strengthen the bonds of communities far beyond the immediate aftermath of disasters. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Sharon E. Harker, Mayor of the Town of Beaufort, North Carolina, express profound gratitude to Baptist on Mission for their tremendous service, leadership, and unwavering commitment to those impacted by disasters, both in our community and across the region. This is from myself as well as all the Board of Commissioners and the citizens of Beaufort. And I would like to have you join me as I present this to you. Everybody, you know what to do. Would you like to say a few words? You don't have to.
It is, it is not my call to be a forefront. It is an honor and privilege to be able to serve all that we can serve. Being recognized for our efforts is a blessing. We don't do it for the recognition. But what an amazing partnership the town of Beaufort has been to us. We would not be able to do what we do if it is not for the partnership and leadership that you all allow us to come in and serve. But thank you for allowing our ministry to serve those in your community.
And as you have mentioned, our staff has been very accommodating and wanted to work on this project. It was because it was from the heart and it was the right thing to do. We want to thank you so much. I want to thank the staff as well. All right, now we're going to move on to the items of consent. We've got the minute meetings, meeting minutes, excuse me, from October the 13th and the 27th. We have an ordinance amendment for Section 96.03 and Section 130.07. We have the FY26 Budget Amendment Number Two and the Resolution authorizing application for PNC financing. Can I get a motion unless there's any questions to approve the items of consent? Got a motion on the floor. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposeds have the same right. Now, we're going to move on to old business. And this has been a topic that we've all been talking about, is the Goddett Hotel, 400 Pollock Street. We have Matt Zap and Ari Grady, who's going to present on that, or unless you'd like me to take the lead. All right, I see right now it's me. The town of Beaufort has worked really hard in good faith with the current owner of the Goddett Hotel, which is on 400 Pollock Street. And we've been working with them for quite some time on this structure and is a important part of Beaufort's history. And preserving it has been a shared goal that we have all had in this community. Through Preservation North Carolina, the property was secured with the intent to protect and restore this historic landmark. And the board has been extremely patient and accommodating and wanting to make sure that this process took place. In your packet, it talks about a partnership that was going to be developed in order to move this project forward. And that partnership is not going to take place. However, we do have some updated news that will be shared, hopefully, by Ms. Maggie Gregg, who is with Preservation North Carolina. So without further ado, just to get an update as to where we stand with this property and the current owner. Ms. Gregg, if you don't mind, coming up to the podium? And I'm not sure if your mic is working. It does? You made me walk up here for nothing?
I was also a theater kid, so I'm not entirely sure. I always need a microphone.
Same, same.
I appreciate your time tonight. Certainly not the anticipated agenda item. However, we've continued to work with the owner to look at possible resolutions in order to move the restoration process forward, as is the joint goal. And in those different options, the owner has come to the decision that at this time, the best way to forward the goal of restoration for the building is to offer the property for sale and allow the stewardship of the property to move into new hands.
And thank you for sharing that. Is, I'm going to ask the board if they have any questions of Ms. Gregg at this point in time. If so, just please recognize, just let me recognize you. Okay, Commissioner Cooper.
That's wonderful news. Because I just feel that, I mean, she responded to our 30-day notice and gave us a schedule. But her pulling back on two of the community representative or whatever leaders or whatever financially, once she pulled back on that, she totally lost my support in terms of trying to preserve that, that structure. I was in conversation with some of the folks and they are twiddling between whether or not to tear it down, knowing that it is a blight to the city. But now that you have presented this, where that, we can put it out there. Hopefully, we will get some, some takers and, and get this thing restored. Because it is, it's a poor history part of Beaufort. And should be preserved as best as possible.
And I do think that the encroachment agreement is a positive for the next steward of the property to have that, you know, ready to be executed. And that allows a step forward that's already taken place for that next steward. And I think the owner was really carefully considering what the right, best path forward for the property in order to ensure that restoration was. And so that's the decision was that at this time, the owner believes that a new steward will be the best option to steward the property forward.
Did she indicate any kind of timeframe as to when the property would be put up for sale?
I do not have that information yet. This was a conversation we had briefly this afternoon to ensure that I can provide the most current update to the board this evening.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
And the town has, the last thing this board wants to do is reestablish deadlines. But the citizens and the staff and the town and this board have bent over backwards with patience. And you hate to have to be at the courthouse step before something happens. So I would certainly ask, in your delicate position of being the communicator that you are, that you report back very clearly that timing is long past and that we want to see a success. But we got to have some news and we need, we need to have a pretty definitive news.
Certainly, and I understand that. I've, I've had multiple conversations with member of the staff. And I really have appreciated the collaboration of the town of Beaufort as we tried to, to work through any of these circumstances to find this resolution and what the best resolution was going to be in that shared goal of seeing the Goddett restored.
I, for one, am not worried about you. But I think the message needs to come very clearly that, that, that we're, we're now re-reaching and, and some of the, some of the dates that we've used in the past, as far as in the easement, this type thing, we're going to have to move forward on.
Yes, sir. I understand that. And I will continue to communicate updates with town staff as I have them.
I just want to reiterate that this board very much wants to see it preserved for its historical and cultural purposes. That is my main goal. And I hope that we are moving in a step in that, in that direction. But as you've heard, you know, we need, we do need that message articulated. So, but that is the goal. This, this board knows how important that building is to the history of this town.
Any further, pass it down to John, please.
Maggie, thank you for coming tonight. And thank you for all the work you've done on this throughout the past year. I know we've had multiple conversations and been working with other members of the community on this as well. I was just curious, with the putting this property up for sale, we have possibly maybe have identified someone who may be interested or multiple people who may be interested in this property as of yet?
Again, this is a very new development. I know over time, there have been people who have expressed that if it ever came to this point, that they would have an interest in the property. And so we will share that information and continue to pursue it. Preservation North Carolina and myself, as the Eastern Office Regional Director, will remain closely involved throughout this process. Future buyers will be subject to, of course, the covenants that are in place and run with the deed, and also to developing a rehabilitation timeline with us, as well as being encouraged to provide that information to the town.
With that new news that, that the owner is placing this property up for sale, I was curious if the board might be interested in holding off on allowing that encroachment agreement to go through. Maybe instead of going through the paperwork for that owner and so forth, for Maggie, but to make that encroachment agreement for the next owner of the property. So as we know, and it would basically kind of lay this on the, on the line that, that we are very interested in extending this encroachment agreement, but to the new owner of the property, so that that owner can then move forward and put this property, you know, into, into gear and, and do the restoration that the town so greatly desires. Great. I think that's a great idea. I'd like to...
I, I would like to suggest, if possible, and this is solely up to the Board of Commissioners and the town, but as we begin to identify a new owner, it may be helpful for the owner to be aware of that encroachment agreement pending as well, as that will help in their process planning.
Absolutely.
Just for clarity for the public, this board has approved the form of the encroachment agreement. I mean, so the encroachment agreement, the wording and the contents have been approved. What the board has not approved is when the encroachment agreement will be executed and delivered. So prospective purchasers should have a high level of confidence that this is the document that, that the board has signed off on.
Great, thank you.
And I think the board has been very transparent that we are willing to extend that encroachment agreement. We've been working on that. And, and I don't think there would be any concern or any, any dissent from the board members about extending that. So I think with full confidence, hopefully, we can move forward and find a new owner for that property. And thank you for your work.
Absolutely.
And thank you for, to Preservation North Carolina, for stepping in and being part of this.
Absolutely. And thank you all for continuing your work on the property as well. I look forward to reaching that, that end goal.
I also like to thank you for clarifying that the covenant will go with the property and the new owner because it's still under preservation.
Yes, and that, that covenant actually runs with the deed in perpetuity. So all subsequent owners will be subject to retaining the historic integrity of the property.
That's exciting. We've got a property for sale, 400 Pollock Street. But I guess we have to wait for that to be officially made known and you'll let us know about that.
Yeah, we'll let you know. Thank you so much.
And thank you for driving all this way.
Absolutely.
She's not around the corner by any means, but you came down and this is a good time for you to be here. And we appreciate seeing you.
I do too. It's good to see everyone. Thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you. Considering no action needs to be taken, we're just going to move on to the next topic. This is the F3 Marina Draft Budget. We've got Mr. Zap and Lori Meehan is here? Okay. Yes, she is. I'm sitting right at her. Big Rock is coming up. I've been using that analogy as a Stephen Covey analogy.
So Lori, do you, would you mind, you want to take it at the podium since we're sharing microphones tonight? Would that be okay? So from a staff perspective, we would like to load up the PowerPoint presentation pertinent to the Marina. And in front of each board member, you should have a printed copy of the very quick and high-level overview of the budget. We've highlighted some of it with some photographs and some general data. But Lori and I have agreed to try to work on this together. Now you get to drive the clicker. You have the clicker in front of you. So I think there's a right-left for advance. So there you have it. Look at, look at the teamwork between staff and F3 Marina straight out of the chute. So, so what we want to do is begin with a very high level, very similar to our normalized budgetary process. So what we would propose tonight is, in cooperation with town staff and F3 Marina, we want to provide the most current updated draft budget. So for example, this would be the equivalency of our May board meeting. And then we would allow or encourage any type of feedback over the next 30 days. And we would ask the board if you have any questions, concerns, items that you would like to have adjusted. We would make those items changed and we would update that for the December 8th board meeting. And that would give everybody an opportunity for public input. So just in general, I'll go through some of the PowerPoint highlights and then all the Marina-related conversations, best management practices, and the comprehensive analysis that Lori has completed with her team will allow her to address those, if that's okay. So on your first slide tonight, want to remind everyone that this has been an ongoing, growing document. This was developed consistent with items identified by the Board of Commissioners and our B-Wolf Committee members. So there's been a lot of input into this process. What we're speaking about tonight is simply a six-month budget as we're on a fiscal year. So we would take control and be back in the driver's seat of the Beaufort Town Docs effective at midnight on January 1st. And this would run us through the budget for a June 30th, 2026, which would coincide with the last half of our fiscal '25-'26 budget. So our goal is to either maintain or approve upon the high standards that have already been established. We've had multiple conversations with Mr. Weeks and his entire team. In fact, I called and chatted with Mr. Haywood today. And we're just trying to make sure we get all the data that we can while we're putting together our budget. We want to ask the board for input tonight on rental rates for commercial operators. We also have a concept that was emailed out. And then we would discuss an option for six annual slip rentals and the rationale behind that. And then we believe we have our final recommendation on insurance tonight. And that would be with Mike McAdon and his insurance agency. We were able to drive the cost down on our insurance coverages and increase our coverage to a $10 million bumper shoot and ultimately be able to come in with that protection under 100 and and ultimately be able to come in with that protection under $160,000 per year. So we want to discuss that. So there's a lot going on here and I even brought my glasses due to the size of the font. But the importance is, for the transparency to any member of our community, those that have been involved in the BWOF situation, we are providing a clear class Fund 14. And this would be a chance to see all the dollars that come into the fund and every expense that goes out would all be a part of our Fund 14. And that's what we would like to discuss tonight. F3 will be responsible for all of its personnel. They are currently in the process of advertising, recruiting, and making a decision pertinent to a general manager. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Lori can correct me, there would be an option for either a maintenance or mechanical-style technician, one professional administrative support, and up to five dock hands depending upon the scalability of the season, time of year, and hopefully the continued growth within the docks. So we're also looking at, what was really important to us is a fresh set of eyes. Allowed Lori to be here over the last 10 days. She's identified improvements that are needed both in the bathroom and shower facilities, which we were aware of. But she's also indicated the importance for enhanced dockside signage, additional safety equipment, potential things like lighting as well as fire extinguishers, things like that. We're also coordinating with our fire inspector to do a full walkthrough of the dock to identify any other areas of inefficiencies or opportunities to enhance safety for all the boatgoers as well as the visitors that are touring and walking through that area. We have, as Lori will speak to, the calculations for rentals, setting a bar, what we believe would be an achievable rate of 30% occupancy. And you want to be able to try to hit the target. And then also our budget supports the use and the importance of what we had been working on for the last probably 120 days, which is installing our fuel tank and borrowing up to $1.2 million. And our annual loan is actually $286,000 per year. So it's included in this budget at $143,000, which would be the first half of the payment would be collected in this timeframe. This will be the pertinent portion of our conversation is to, there's a lot of change occurring. And I'll let Lori speak to this slide. If she doesn't mind, she can talk about the analysis that she determined and how they came up with a suggestion. And then we'll pause here and take some feedback from the board, if that's okay.
Thanks, Matt. Hi, everyone. It's great to be here for the last 10 days. I can't believe I'm going home already, but you will see my face again the first week in December. I plan to be here all of December, all of January, possibly all of February, depending on how long it takes to get the marinas staffed, everyone onboarded, and all of the technical systems that we'll be implementing in place and have everyone trained. So when I met with you via Zoom the last time, my marching orders were to come back with some recommendations for pricing. And that's something that I've worked on this past week. So what we looked at in the chart that you have in front of you gives you some breakdowns of pricing that the commercial vendors currently are paying for 2025. And then my recommendation or proposal to you for what we do for 2026 for that year. The discussion that we had at the last meeting was that we wanted to get to market rate at a certain point in time. But we also did not want to have that price increase be very abrupt so as to have folks that were not planning for that this season be put in a position where they may not be ready for that kind of increase. So based on the size of slip, based on market rate, based on what folks were currently paying, the formula used for the proposed amounts is based on a slip size and a per-foot rate. The only one that's different would be for the catamaran where it's 1.5 the slip size because of the width of the slip. Market rate, we believe, is a very reasonable $16 a foot. Some places could be higher, 16 to 20, maybe in different parts of the season. But overall, for an annual contract going from off-season, maybe even when their vessel might not be there, throughout the season, we're looking at making the recommendation of $10.50. Typically, marinas will increase their rates 3% to 5% per year, depending on the market. My recommendation would be that we double that so that we can get to market sooner by having those rate increases year-over-year be anywhere from 6% to 10%. But that's the recommendation that I have for you at this time. In my work in coming up with that number, one of the factors that I considered, not sure my boss is going to like this, but one of the factors I considered was if we were right at market right now and all of those vendors had another place to go and the town were to lose the revenue of parking from all of that traffic, having that little bit of extra income from the 1050 to the 16 for the town would probably not be in your best interest. So while we are making a percentage of revenue and that's how we're making our money here, we also want to be good partners and we want to make good recommendations that will work for the town, for the commercial vendors, for everyone that's involved. And that's how we landed where we are. So I'm happy to take questions about this piece first.
Thank you so much. This is exactly what I wanted to see. Our small businesses are really important for our downtown. And honestly, they're part of the culture that attracts people here, you know, like parasail and ferries and sailing trips. So I really want to keep them downtown and to allow them time to budget for these increases. So I think this is really reasonable. I realize that, you know, market rate, attaining that's going to be down the line. I also want to acknowledge that, you know, Galant Channel is going to want to recruit businesses to their new campus in time. And I think we need to hold on to these businesses and treat them right and keep them for here as long as we can. So I really appreciate what you've done here. I think it's very reasonable. You know, there's some pricing that goes down, but you're leveling everybody all at one time, even though some people go down, some people go up. But there'll be some other things that they have to do in their dock spaces that may kind of compensate for their reduced rate. But I really like what I'm seeing and I appreciate your hard work on this.
Quick question. So what is the present rate now?
So what you see in that first column is what those vendors are paying right now. So for instance, Island Ferry Adventures, they have two slips. They're currently paying $4,800 per year, per slip.
Okay, per year.
Correct. And then Waterbug Tours, the price that we were given was $3,200 and that was based on the vessel not being there for some of the months out of the year. So they were only paying for the months that the vessel was there. Our recommendation would be that these contracts be annual contracts. The amount that's listed would be what is paid. That could be broken out over the months that they're there or over 12 months, whatever's the best situation for them to make payment. But they would have that slip for the year.
Well, I'm not sure, you know, how the rest of my fellow commissioners may feel about. But at the $16, that'd be a shot in the arm, basically, would it not? Because they would be paying more than what they are doing now.
Correct. So right now, it looks like what has been coming in is $47,000. This next year would increase to $51,345. I know that as we were doing our notes and figuring this out, we looked at the linear footage and did the multiplication times 16. I'm sorry that I don't have that in front of me, but I want to say it was about $86,000 when I compared the... Okay, $78,000. When I compared that increase to the $400,000 worth of parking revenue that I was told was generated in season, it seemed like it was a better idea to have that parking revenue continue to be there.
Well, I like the gradual increase. I think that would be comfortable for a business to gradually stepping up versus boom.
So if you look at a 10% increase year-over-year, by year five, we would be at what's current with the market. We would then need probably five additional years to catch up to what market, if it continues to go up 3% to 5%. But I would recommend for the next five years, a 10% increase per year. And then they would be closer to market, but it just depends on what market is at that point. It's certainly not going to go down.
To get away from that, let's talk on your dock hands.
Yes, sir.
Have you guys or will you guys be able to speak to the dock hands that's working there now if they would like to continue to stay on?
Yes. So what we've done is we've posted Beaufort Town Dock positions that are only available for the current staff to apply for. And I've met with all of the staff there. Those that have expressed interest in applying have done so. One is retiring and one's still undecided. But we do feel like we will have staff ready to go January 1st.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So how are you today, Lori?
I'm well, thanks.
Thank you for coming. I know we spoke before and I just wanted to go over some things again with you about how you determine those market rates.
Sure.
And what you use for comparison.
So we have a market study that we've done that looks at properties inland up into New Bern, then up and down the coast. They're not all going to be an apples-and-apples. The closest property to you that offers the wet slips at a monthly rate is Homer Smith. Their rate is 16. There are rates that are less. There are rates that are more. When I looked at the average over the 15 properties that we have information for, 16 was spot on.
And I know we had spoken last time, some were for market rate and some were against market rate, as we talked about. I guess, we talked about where the commercial vessels might go if we raised it too much. Are there other areas in this area that they might be able to go to?
My understanding is that there are new docks that will be available to them and there are certainly plenty of docks in the area. Moorhead City would likely be where you would see folks move if they were going to move away from where we are.
Okay. Are there any docks in there that are as similar to downtown Beaufort with the amount of foot traffic and so forth?
That I don't believe is true. I think that's what we have going for us. But when you look at the conditions of those docks and the depth of that water, fixed docks with not much water at times, you're going to take the good with the bad. And that's something that we would commit, obviously, in working with the town to commit dollars to improving. But for right now, those fixed docks in their condition, I would say that they're not really worthy quite yet of market rate.
I have a prepared statement for this. And so I may be one of the dissenting on the board for rates because I do think that we should be at market rates for this. And from what it appears, the recommended rates were based on guidance from input from BWOF and other board members. But as I said, the last meeting, I felt that market rates were fair rates because there are rates that are higher in other locations upwards of maybe $22 in some locations and $16 at Homer Smith and so forth. And, you know, the committee obviously probably would like to kind of, you know, they have business relationships, they have friendly relationships with the vendors downtown. But for me, my focus is on the town, the taxpayers of the town, and trying to make sure that the Beaufort Enterprise Fund is funded properly. So I did not receive any evidence to date, any analysis documentation showing that charging those true market rates would cause harm to the local operators or put any vendors out of business. Claims were made asserting that market rates would be damaging, but I've seen no data that's been sent to me to support that. I've done my own research. I've kind of looked at websites online to determine what charges there are for these commercial operators. And there are some pretty good, you know, amounts of money that are being collected from these operators downtown. So, you know, is the subsidy truly necessary for a business operating at that level of revenue downtown? And I don't think so. I think a fair market rate is really what we should be striving for with the town. And as we talked about, we've inquired about other marinas in the region such as Homer Smith, Bridgeton, Swansboro, and some have a higher rate. Our Front Street location offers an even greater advantage. High visibility, high foot traffic, and the most desirable waterfront in Carter County. In terms of business opportunity, our slips are arguably worth more than comparable regional marinas. It is not the duty of the town of Beaufort to subsidize private commercial businesses at the expense of taxpayers. We have already invested hundreds of thousands of dollars into the docks. We have allocated over $226,000 to the Dock Enterprise Fund. And we're facing up to $1.2 million in future debt for the fuel farm, all before collecting a single dollar in revenue for the Enterprise Fund. We have also asked the state of North Carolina for $12 million in appropriations to rehabilitate the docks. If we now choose to subsidize commercial operators and voluntarily forego revenue, what message does that send to the state? The optics are not favorable if we're asking for public funding while declining to charge fair market rates. In other words, we're fine. We don't need the money. If we adopt the reduced rate of $10.50 rather than the market rate of $16 per foot, the town will forego $26,000 in revenue in just the first year. Over multiple years, compounding with minimal annual increases, that becomes hundreds of thousands of dollars the town loses to the Dock Enterprise Fund. Every dollar we fail to collect ultimately becomes a dollar our taxpayers must cover when repairs and replacements are required. Another issue, if we start existing operators at below-market rates, what happens when new vendors apply for the open slips? Do we subsidize them also? How much revenue are we prepared to walk away from? As an elected commissioner, my responsibility is to the citizens and taxpayers of Beaufort, unfortunately not to the private commercial vendors. For 40 years, the docks operated privately without public oversight. And now that the docks are controlled by publicly elected officials, we have the opportunity to establish a transparent, market-based system that protects taxpayers, funds maintenance, and sustains the Enterprise Fund long-term. For these reasons, I would move that we adopt a fair market rate of $16 for the commercial slips in 2026 with annual increases of 3% to account for inflation. The approach is fair, it's transparent, and it's fiscally responsible. And it puts the taxpayers of Beaufort first. Thank you.
I don't have anything on this subject, but I presume at some point you're going to go to this second. So on this subject, I have no comment.
Okay, my turn. Thank you, Lori. Really appreciate you being here and all the work you've already done, especially even before you officially started. So thank you. I did want to echo Commissioner Gillikin. I think this is a good way to start off the transition and the change from the old operator to F3, the new operator working in partnership with the town. I think that, I also agree with Commissioner Cooper, to immediately raise the rates would create hardship for our commercial operators in a way that they weren't prepared. There's been a lot of change over the past few years in discussion about what's going to happen to the docks. And it's really hard to plan when you don't know, you know, what's happening. And this contract was only signed, what, six months ago, less than six months ago. So it is a new change. I believe it's going to be a very, a great change for our docks. We're all really excited about you coming in and working with the town, but it is a change. And so in that regard, I think that this is a fair way to start off the new partnership with F3. I will say that my goal is absolutely to do what is best for the town of Beaufort. And I think that, as we heard you say, it's not just the revenue, the extra, I think we said about $26,000 the first year. I think there's other factors to consider, like the parking, how much revenue would be lost from the parking, how much revenue may be lost if we don't have the commercial operator... lost from the parking, how much revenue may be lost if we don't have the commercial operators and their customers going to the general store after their trip, or going to a restaurant or the other places that money is spent. We did get that report, I believe from the Park Service, about how much money those small businesses do contribute to our economy. So, that's nothing, that's something that we need to keep in mind as well. And I think as we're looking at it, you know, we need to consider the triple bottom line. How does this impact not just the annual revenue, but all of the other factors that go into our town budget and how it impacts our community and our residents and our visitors? Because this service is, we know it is very important to a lot of our visitors, and yes, if they moved to Moorhead City or to Atlantic Beach or somewhere else, those visitors could possibly get in their car, go to a different place than Beaufort. But that's, I don't think that's the vision that we currently want, and we want to try to support our commercial operators and make sure they can stay here. You know, possibly in the future, they may say there's a better spot for us, but right now, we want to encourage them to stay and continue providing the service that they have for so many years. So, thank you again.
And I know as always, you do your homework, you studied the task, and you move forward. I like your zeal that you place in there. But what you have also stirred up is the fact that one of the things that I see is that Beaufort needs something more than what we have now. I mean, if we were to shoot for that $16, and they decide, and they have been approached by Moorhead and other places to move to, we will lose revenue. We're going to lose those visitors that, some come here because they love this beautiful city, but they also know that they can get on a boat and go out and visit this island or that island. But if that is not here for them, then they're gone. And we need to look at it, what you have kind of opened to me, as I'm looking at the future of Beaufort, is that, and I have stated when I was out talking with people, is that one day, this could all be gone. And what will Beaufort do then? So, we need to be able to have other, things other than just tourism. We need to have something that could really sustain in case one day that disappears. And you bring us that example that, and they could. Once they leave, so do the people. And for right now, you know, we would like for the people to be here because it helps our economy, it helps the small businesses, it helps those who are operating their boats in and out of our docks. But if we go ahead and give that shot in the arm for a couple of dollars, I think we missing, we would be missing. And I appreciate the effort that you put into it, but I think you would be missing.
I think you've done a good job reiterating what other people have said. And the concern, or to me, is it's not a $16 gouging by any means. I mean, this is market rates. Homer Smith is at $16, you know, you have Swansboro at the $22 range or so. I think, you know, we didn't open up the docks to the entire community to decide if other vendors wanted to come in. So, I think we're kind of playing to just fear that we're going to lose vendors. Why would vendors leave at market rates? It doesn't make any sense. Market rates are market rates. We're not trying to gouge these vendors. We're trying to do fair and equitable, you know, rents. We have quite a bit of money that we need for these docks, and I just don't want to shortchange taxpayers in our community, because every dollar we forgive for these commercial operators, we're asking the taxpayers to pay. And, you know, there's repairs, there's all sorts of, you know, things that the docks are going to need. And basically, we hope, based on what the, based on what the budget shows, we should make about $60,000 for this first six months. But that's if everything goes great, and that's if the, you know, the fuel tanks are put in the proper time and everything, and construction, obviously, we know construction doesn't always move the way we'd like it to move. So, you know, I think we, you know, by starting behind the eight ball at $10.50, we're basically forgiving 100, over $100,000 over the next five years. And so, that's money that can be used for the docks. And I would think the vendors would want the docks to be taken care of and for us to invest in the docks and be partners in this. So, like I said, I'm not trying to gouge them, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to make a fair and equitable rate, which is market rate. Market rate is market rate. And, you know, we've known that the docks are going to, that we're going to change over. And this has been going on for years. And, you know, these rates that they have had in the past, I would imagine probably knew that they were below market rates. So, it's not like we're doing anything out of the ordinary here. I think it's good to start fresh, start anew, and put in place a way that we can, and, you know, it's the, it's the, it's the will of the board. If the board feels we want to stay below market rates and we want to, you know, forego income, that's up to the board. I don't agree with that, and it's just not my priority.
Start fresh, we're not starting fresh. We may be starting anew because this is something that we, as a town, is now doing, and we're not forgiving anything.
We're forgiving revenue. By charging a low rate, we're not forgiving revenue. And where's that money I can spend on my trees that I can sell for summer?
I agree, yeah. Homer, Homer is maybe at $16.
Which is not like downtown Beaufort. I mean, we have a, we have a dock, we have a, we have the front porch of Beaufort is downtown Beaufort.
Beaufort, right on the waterfront. That is an amazing spot for our vendors. And by all means, I wish them the best, I hope they do wonderfully over these years, but that is nowhere near comparable to Homer Smith. For walk-in, walk-in traffic and so forth. So, but if it's your priority not to charge that and to forego revenue, that's, that's the board's decision.
Well, I think that gradual step that she's referring to, I think it's a lot better than that total shot in the, shot in the arm to where that, the vendors whether, you know, look at it and, and say, well, you know, I may want to move somewhere else.
We don't know that.
No, we don't. No, we don't.
That's an assumption.
And that's not, there's no, no indication that that's true.
All right. We can have this robust conversation throughout the day. Once again, this is just talking about the topic. We are not voting on anything today, but we do have some more information that needs to be uncovered.
I think you do have a motion on the floor, Mayor.
I made a motion.
Oh, we do?
Oh, you did?
Oh, you made a speech and a motion and a speech. What was the motion again?
My vote, yeah. My vote, yeah, motion for market rate with 3% increase each year.
All right. So, we've got, I'm going to call for the question. We've got a market rate with a 3% increase motion on the table. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, have the same right.
No.
Nays have it. Thank you very much. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the budget.
Thank you, ma'am. What we have before you on the big screen is page one of a two-page document. We want to go over this at a high level to explain what we're proposing and what F3 has brought before us. For the six-month period, beginning January the 1st, 2026, concluding June 30th, 2026, would be a total estimated budget of $1,815,094 total. The operating expenses during this period would be $584,225, leaving a net operating income of approximately $329,993, assuming that we would have our fuel tanks go into the ground between the 1st of January and be concluded before the end of May, beginning to sell fuel as early as April 1st. There's additional non-operating incomes and issues that would be reduced out of that, that total dollar amount of 329. And that would be items including safety updates and cosmetic improvements for both the bathrooms and the showers. That would be an estimated total cost of upwards of $50,000 for both the shower facilities and other emergency repairs that would be needed. An improvement into the Wi-Fi system budgeted at up to $10,000. A landing page and a website pertinent to the Beaufort Town Docks at $10,000. Annually, the town contributes a little bit more than $100,000 to dredging, and so we've allocated $50,000 in this preliminary budget towards that $100,000 of dredging match. And then our debt, as we indicated earlier, would be approximately $286,000 a year in our payment on our fuel tanks for the first five years. So, we would need to encompass and encumber the $143,000 payment in the first six months. On the $1.8 million budget with operating and non-operating expenses leaves a net income of approximately $67,000 plus or minus. To the penny in your budget, it's shown as $66,993. An additional question that was raised by the commissioners at previous meetings and to provide you a general update, the Water Improvement Fund currently has approximately $224,500 in that specific reserve account. And additionally, for the community's edification, we are proposing a fuel tank installation project, and that would be a $1.2 million project, again, with a loan payment of approximately $286,000 annually, and our first payment would be due in summer of 2026. So, the proposed total budget again is 1.8 million, and I know that individuals on the board have read this and looked at it last month and then this month. And if you have specific and detailed questions, either Lori and/or I and Christie would be happy to try to answer them for you tonight.
So, a couple minor points to be, as I understand it, you're going to adopt a budget in December, and you're going to gather up any variances that you need between now and then. A couple minor ones then, if I could, which I guess will be addressed, what, to you and staff, not to F3? Who's established this budget? Whose budget is this, town or theirs? So, this is the F3 budget, so they will make these changes?
Yeah.
Okay. So, under slip rental commercial, you show in the budget $54,652.50, and on the sheet that you just showed, you showed $51,345,000. So, I'd ask that you check those two numbers, because there seems to be a variance.
We do have some slips that are not rented in the commercial area.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
We have slips in the commercial area that are not being used currently, and our anticipated goal is to have all of them rented, which is why you see that number for commercial.
I thought you just talked about here, which is commercial income is $51,000.
That's for the existing vendors. There are five additional slips that we believe would be rented out for commercial operation at market rate. That's what will get us the additional revenue.
So, you think the budget number on the sheet is correct then?
Correct.
Okay. The second question I had was, under 7230, where Mayor's and Maintenance General, you've got by some miracle the exact same number as we had for the property taxes and the first thing having to do 611. I just want to note sure that that's, if that's 611's property tax thing, I'd like to, I don't think that's to be in this budget.
We did move that, and we decided that would help us with the office space that's currently not great and is going to need some overhaul. So, since the, we believed that we had that as an expense item, we moved that funding to Repair and Maintenance General with the idea that the office would be the area that we could focus on.
Which office?
The Dockmaster's office.
Okay, so that will be repairs and maintenance, and you just happened to use the same exact number in your budget?
Well, we didn't want to change the budget that we had given you in terms of what we were looking at, so yes, that's how we did it. It was a little bit of...
I just happened to notice, I just happened to notice it was the same number, and I thought it was more than a coincidence, but apparently it wasn't.
No, we moved it.
That's pretty, that's pretty close. I want to see how you come out on actual on that.
Just the truth.
The other thing that I would mention to you and for us to consider at the December Board, you're projecting through the first three months a total loss of about $143,000. And in addition, you're going to have to fill the fuel tanks or reimburse what's there, which is about $75,000. So, I think as far as working capital, you're going to need about $218,000 based on this budget or beating this budget. We, as Matt mentioned, you have 224,500 in the fund. I'm going to recommend at the December meeting, Matt, that we do a amendment to our budget and increase the working capital in the fund by $200,000 for the, for the planning purposes of the first quarter. I would also suggest from a town standpoint that we look at that quarterly to make sure that you have the working capital available to operate the business. I've been in this business, I know what operates.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I would be sure that you have, I'd be, as an operator, I'd make sure that we are ahead of it so that you don't have, so that you have available funds. Those are the, I have some minor things, but I can clear those up with staff at a later date. I do think you're, I do think you'll spend a little bit more money on advertising and promotion and, and some of those things than, than zero, as it's shown here, because you're going to be shut down effect for three months. I think you're going to probably pump some money into promotion, advertising, and I know you want to show a positive result for the first six months, but I'd spend the money on advertising if I were you.
Thank you, sir. Can I just ask a follow-up question? You mentioned that we would need to buy out the fuel that's existing. Is that correct?
Somebody, we don't own it.
But it's been paid for, correct? So, are we paying back?
The town does not own that, the town does not own that fuel.
Okay.
So, somebody, when the new fuel tanks are going in, somebody's going to have to fill them.
Oh, correct.
And, and you're going to have to figure out what you do with the fuel that's there today, which we don't, we, we, the town, don't own. So, in my mind, sometime soon, you're going to spend about $75,000 for fuel inventory. So, I'd just put that into your...
Thank you.
Into your planning, because you're going to need it. You also have the typical lag of a business with payables and all those fun things, which you're very well used to.
While we were down there, Commissioner Spiegler, would you like to add anything to that on the budget? All righty. We're talking about the budget, any comments from the side of the podium? No? Okay.
Thank you. Would you mind putting up the optional annual slip rental memo that I saw on your PDA? So, Lori has identified that in our West Floater docks, that there is a potential for conflict that would expose us to risk, and I'm not going to put words in her mouth, but what we did is we provided the board an option that on the West Floater, on the west end of that dock system, which is currently identified in our mapping system as West Floater 1 through West Floater 6, which are all 35-foot slips, that there's an opportunity to provide potentially an annualized slip rental program. The market rate on that 35 feet at $16 is an annual rate of $6,720. And I believe, sir, that's what's showing some additional rental. We have a question, because we were on marching orders from B. Wolf and from this board, that we were to remain 100% transient, and so I would turn the mic and the opportunity to engage and answer any questions over to Lori, but I wanted to bring this item up for conversation.
Thank you. I did just want to mention the thinking behind this. In walking the docks every day for the last 10 days, I've noticed that there have been vessels that have not moved, that clearly are not transient vessels, they have been there every single day. My guess is that those vessels are going to have to go somewhere, whether they're going to be moved out of the marina or we look at continuing some kind of annual agreement for them. This is one way to handle that, at least for the first year. The other part to this is that I'm very familiar with vessels that are coming and going near an inlet. I've worked with these properties for the last five years that are similar, not in makeup as being all transient, but in current and wind conditions near an inlet. That west side of the West Floater, that is right next to Fins, is not easily navigable when you've got any kind of current. There's not much room to come in and out of those slips. Having those slips be for transient boaters that may not be familiar with the docks with the current would not be, I think, in our best interest if we kept them as transients. That would be the last place I would ever put someone. It would have to be, you know, we had to fit them in. I would rather have them up against the bulkhead, blocking other people than have them there. So, this was just a thought that I had, a proposal for that. So this was just a thought that I had, a proposal for that, those six slips. I thought it might benefit two areas. One, an area that's not easily navigable, and two, we clearly have vessels in there that have been sitting there for quite some time.
Anybody have any comments or would like to address that? You want to try?
Thank you, Lori, again. I think that's very reasonable, especially as we are building our number of people, number of transients. So I think utilizing those for long-term rentals, if there's a market for it, which it seems like there probably would be, especially in that area that's not quite as easily able to get into, I think that's a good idea. And I know we didn't speak about this earlier, but similarly, if you look in the East Basin, where the commercial operators are, I know me and you talked about how that entry point is also quite challenging. There's no floating docks where the commercial operators are right now. It's kind of a little bit of a similar space where it's not the best place to dock people, but with the commercial operators, we know they're doing, going in and out every day, so they have the experience to do that. So I would have no problem, if the board wishes, making those six spots in the West Floater yearly rentals. And I think we had discussed before, too, we could come up with a system of how those, if that's what we agree to, how they would be allocated. We have ways in the town, like for our kayak rentals, we have lotteries, or if it was something else, we could do it that way, too.
One quick comment on that, if you would. You might want to think about that, making those 30-day rentals, so that you don't overcommit yourself. You'll still get the customer, in my opinion.
Thank you, sir.
But they will be at the $16 rate, is that correct?
That's correct.
There you go, John.
I didn't mention this when I saw you the other day and we were talking about this, but I'm not sure if F3 got this, but the BWOOF had a set of objectives for the docks, and one of them was optimize utilization of the dock by various user groups. And although we didn't call out a user group as being, you know, like annual renter or 30-day renter, I do think it fits in nicely, that those six could potentially be community members in a lottery style. I know I would put my name in the lottery. I think that's pretty exciting, and it makes sense.
Yeah, I would agree. I think, you know, keeping this as a transient, but allowing for the monthly rental would make sense, and looking forward to seeing possibly other commercial entities at the, at the East Basin as well.
So if there's no further questions on the western side of the West Floater, F3 has brought forward some questions pertinent to our contractual obligation that we have requested of our partner to provide day docking and/or local folk to have access to our dock system without a cost. So Lori, if it's okay, Mayor, we would ask that she could share her concept and ideas as she's reviewed the docks and has an additional suggestion. Is that okay?
Thank you. So my understanding was that we wanted to have six spaces available for free, three hours at a time, for folks to come and dock, day docking, free day docking. Originally, we had looked at the bulkhead as being an area that that could take place. After reviewing this again, I'm thinking it may be easily managed for those day dockers to be on the inside of the West Basin. So slips nine through 14, not the bulk, not the T-head, but the inside six, directly opposite of what we're looking at for the annual slips, be designated for day docking. I would like to work with the local businesses that are counting on us to provide that, to come up with signage, help us manage the use so that it's not abused. But that would be, I think, maybe a more manageable way to deal with the folks that are there for free versus having them kind of co-mingled in with the rest of the, of the boats and the fairways. Still giving you the six, but just in an identified area.
I like that. But let's hear what everybody else has to say about that. Any other comments about that proposed idea?
Lori, when you selected that, you said nine through 14, right? I guess in the past, I had thought that we were using 13, 14, 25, 26, 37, 38, possibly. But I was also curious why we didn't use maybe the West floaters, the West floaters as maybe the area for, for those transient boaters to come in and out of instead. Do you have a proposal, too, as far as even 13, 14? How you would move those boats out when there are other ones parked in place? What would be required of those boats and so forth? I'd love to hear.
Sure. So the, the requirement that F3 would have in place for any boat that's tying up to the dock would be that we would have that vessel information. That's easily captured through one of the two software platforms that we'll be using, DAWA and Marinago. So whether they're paying or not, they would need to be logged into that system. We would need to have their name, phone number, email address, vessel information. That vessel would need to have liability insurance, and we would need to have that on file. In looking at using 2, 13, 14, 25, 26, or maybe 13, 14, 25, 26, 37, and 38, having vessels there coming and going would, I think, be problematic if we weren't able to manage it well. So if someone were to come in in the evening after the staff has gone home, we come back in in the morning, we have vessels that wanted to leave at daybreak, but they were blocked in by someone who was there, I think that's going to be problematic during busy times. But if we have the transients there with the idea that we know that they're leaving at daybreak, so at first light, I'm out of here, great, I'm going to put you here on the bulkhead because I know you're not going to cause, you know, an issue with someone needing to come and go. I think that's a more manageable way to look at the space, rather than having day dockers that maybe needed to sleep it off after being at the bar a little too long, and, but it just may not be something that's, that's going to work well. Having them in those slips, it's, they're contained, they're not impacting the other boaters as much.
Residents here may be a creature of habit, and currently, many residents will pull up in the evening and leave their boats there overnight. And I would imagine hours for F3 probably are, end at 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock or so. What plan, what would you have as a plan for dealing with the boats that may have been left in the evening when you come back that, that morning and find...
They're still there?
Tied up, yeah.
Well, that's the other reason that we would have their information on file. If they're there beyond the three hours, I would be charging them for their night stay at the transient rate.
Right, but if they were not on file?
Then we would be tracking them down. They, they, if, in order to be in the basin and taking advantage of the docks at no cost, they'll need to provide us their information. We need to know what vessel's there. We need to have them in our system. They don't have to pay to be there as long as they stay within that three-hour time limit, which is what I've been told you've asked for. So if they're spending the night, it's the transient rate to spend the night.
Okay.
And you're requiring insurance?
I am requiring insurance, yes, sir.
So although this is not your first rodeo, it sounds like you're going to be able to manage this very, very well, and to make sure everybody stays compliant within that timeframe. So we trust and believe in the fact that you're going to be able to do that, because if not, then the individual will have to pay.
Well, at least for the first couple of months, I will be living on those docks.
Okay.
So...
So they'll have to deal with you personally.
That's correct.
They don't want to do that, do they? All right. Well, Lisa, I want to thank you for including that into F3's management. That's been very important for our citizens to be able to have that, and to be able to have great access is going to be important. So it's been something that the board's been really looking forward to, and glad you were able to bake that into the program. Is there anything else you wish to discuss, Matt? Okay, so we did have a suggestion of making a budget amendment of $200,000 to be added in for working capital. It was mentioned to do this at the December 8th meeting. So we want to include that. Would you like the staff to include that into the budget amendment? Well, we just, no, not asking you to vote on it now, but do you want them to tie to look at putting that into the budget so that you can discuss it at the December 8th meeting?
It would be from the reserve account for the docks into your operations, which is a good suggestion. If not, you'd be starting with a kitty of zero. Ultimately, we'd be looking at that, so that's a question that we would want finance to be prepared for for December. I think that we should seriously consider that and provide you the documentation. Is that okay? Thank you. That's all, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lori. Now we're going to move on to public comment. Do we have anyone signed up? All right. So we're going to move on to the manager's report, Matt.
So thank you, ma'am. I would like to address the fact that with F3 boots on the ground, both literal and figuratively, over the last 10 days, I'd like to publicly recognize and thank Lori for her professionalism, her guidance, and her assistance. And I think you'll see some of the faces in the audience. She's gone around and she's worked really hard to try to meet with our commercial vendors and operators, to meet with our existing team members, and has participated with our staff quite well. So if this is indicative of what's to be coming in the future, we're very much looking forward to it. Also, we have a series of special events, obviously, year-round, but I think the mayor's going to address some of those. So I wanted to take an opportunity and thank the Police Department for their extraordinary effort and how well Halloween went and the safety on Ann Street, and we received a tremendous amount of feedback for that. One of the things that was asked of us for next year would be to play some additional street signage out indicating road closures, but I believe that the local residents on Ann Street were very much appreciative of that additional safety. So if there's anything further, both the Police Department and my office, we gladly take that feedback. And I'll conclude my report tonight, try to keep it brief. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Matt before we move on? Okay, thank you. Now we're going to move on to the mayor and commissioner's comment. I'm going to pass the mic down to John, and we'll work our way from. No comment? Okay. Commissioner Gilligan?
Although we might be a little bit tired of the conversation right now, I just want to add that it's really important about not what we do, how we do it. That's where I'm coming from on this hiking up rates for commercial operators over a reasonable amount of time at a reasonable cost. And I think we have to think about not taking full advantage of the local market rate and what that could be in the cost of community relationships and the pain of the potential secondary impacts. And I have confidence that we'll be moving in the right direction if we do that. I wanted to address one of Commissioner Lepicolo's concerns, which is directly penalizing the taxpayers if there's a maintenance or repair issue. And we plan to use dock revenue to pay loan proceeds, I mean loan payments, and we are going to use dock funds revenues to do maintenance and repair. So I don't see it as directly penalizing our taxpayers for not taking advantage of the full market rate, and those will conclude my comments.
Thank you. I'd just like to take this time to thank the mayor for attending Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church yesterday in proclamation for celebrating its 160-year anniversary in the same location. Just fantastic, God has found a way to just keep them there and keep things going. Tomorrow being Veterans Day, I want to thank Carret Community College and the Culinary School for hosting a breakfast for the veterans this morning. It was well-received, a good number of veterans was there. We had a guest speaker, Lieutenant Colonel, can't remember his last name, but he called us all attention on deck, and I hadn't, hadn't heard military lingo in a long time. And he caught it by surprise, but it was, he was a very good speaker. Tomorrow is Veterans Day, and all of the veterans who are out in the audience and those that may be on Facebook, I want to thank you for your service. And I know a good deal may be Marines celebrating 250-year anniversary. That is a serious milestone. And anyway, thank you. And I'd like to thank the residents of Beaufort who came out for early voting in November the 4th. I want to thank everyone for your vote of confidence in returning me to this board. I love serving, and I shall continue to be the voice of the community and continue to protect and preserve our waterways in and around. I just thank you guys. You, you trust me, and you showed by voting, voting me back in for another four years. Thank you.
So I'm also honored to have served as a Beaufort commissioner, and this is my last comment opportunity, so I, I take the opportunity to suggest seven wake-up red flag topics that are less apparent than our streets are. As concerns the UDO, we may want to delay the significant cost of the process until state law no longer prohibits downzoning or taking. In rebuffing the $16 million safe harbor investment in our community, we now must solve approximately 92% of the remaining dock improvement costs not covered by the $1.2 million fuel tank investment and debt. Sound economic development is critical to our town's future financial condition. Next, we need to look beyond 2027, when debt capacity is forecasted to be limited, especially as it concerns unfunded infrastructure. Next, I think we need to address the safety issue on Highway 70 within Beaufort at the Town Creek, Gallants Channel, and Turner Street intersections at the east end of the High Bridge. The next thing I think we need to pay attention to is, we need, we should celebrate and adopt the precedent set with a tough commitment to workforce housing. And next, I think we need to accelerate our efforts to solve inflow and infiltration solutions and acknowledge that our sewer system has adequate capacity if we manage these solutions and who we serve. And finally, we need to study the alternatives available for downtown parking and improvements. I sincerely thank the multiple town managers and especially our town staff for their respectful support during my term. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Oliver. Say thank you to everybody who's participating today in person or online, and yes, thank you, everybody who got out and voted. We had a really good turnout. I want to say thank you to Commissioner Oliver. I learned a lot serving with you for the past two years, and thank you for everything you've done for this town, and really respect the role that you've played and everything that I've gotten to learn from you, sitting here next to you for two years. So thank you. I want to say thank you to the town staff. Y'all did a great job with Halloween. We had a great time, attended multiple parties on Ann Street and got lots of candy, which we had to eat immediately as soon as we got it. That's what happens when you're two years old. And thank you, Mayor Harker, for driving the Beaufort vehicle, not the, not the high-water vehicle, but her, her vehicle in the Veterans Day parade. We had a great time representing the town of Beaufort and remembering all our veterans, and it was a great turnout. So thank you again, Sharon, for, for doing that. So thank you again, Sharon, for doing that. And the last thing I'll say is we have a BWOOF waterfront committee meeting coming up next week. The date is November 20. As always, we meet at 1:00 PM over on the other side, and that meeting is open to the public. We always love having anyone who wants to attend come here, what we're going to talk about. So if you want to join, please, please come next Thursday, and that's all I've got.
You mean my high-water rescue vehicle was a inside joke. I would like to start by thanking the town staff for all that they do for the town. I can't say enough about how well you respond to our citizens and how our town is always looking amazing, and it doesn't come easy, it comes with a lot of effort. Yes, tomorrow is Veterans Day, and I would like to thank the veteran that's on our board, Commissioner Cooper, and thank you for your sacrifice and your service by serving in the Air Force. We are not going to be seeing each other again before Thanksgiving, so I want to be able to say happy Thanksgiving to many of you. I do have some announcements that I will be talking about. We have a holiday food drive. This is going to be benefiting the Boys and Girls Club. This is going to be a partnership between Bowcoast Residence as well as the town of Beaufort. If you wish to drop off any items, you can drop them off at two spots. You can drop them off at Bowcoast at their, what do they call it? Well, not the convenience center, clubhouse, thank you, Jen. Or you can take it to the town of Beaufort, we have a box there that's going to be collected. Drop-off items need to be there by November the 20th, they need to be kid-friendly and perishable items. Non-perishable items need to be put into the box. So that'll be a great package that they're going to put together for the Boys and Girls Club members for the holiday. We also have Forks Ups for families, helping families while help is on hold with SNAP benefits. Several members of our Clausen families have been affected by the government shutdown, and while they're taking care of us, we want to be able to take care of them. Clausen is participating in a food bank at Beaufort Loaves and Fishes and will donate 10% of all food and beverages. Sales on Wednesday, November the 12th, so join us in bringing the donation packaged foods and cash or a $25 gift card for the Beaufort, for our Beaufort Piggly Wiggly and Food Lion groceries. And these items are online, so if I'm messing it up, you should go there. Matt, you should have done this. Join our Beaufort team, they're hiring in Public Works, that's a great place to be. And I see that you put this one in front of me to go ahead and say, it says "Pardon Our Mess" on Turner Street. So there's free parking on Turner Street. We have acquired the Ann Street parking lot for those who were not here for the last meeting, and we're going to be able to provide parking for free so that you can continue to shop in those areas while the street is being repaired. I do want to thank Commissioner Cooper and Commissioner Spiegler. We did have a really good time at the Veterans Day Parade in Morehead City. I really travel, I like traveling with Commissioner Spiegler's son, Avery, he makes all the parties real fun. We did have a recent election, and we want to welcome back, reelect Commissioner Cooper, and would also like to congratulate Commissioner-elect Dexter Matthews, who will be joining us. Now Commissioner Oliver felt like today was going to be his last time to say something, and that's not true. So I'm going to put you on the spot, you will have a few more words to say. This will not be goodbye, I'm not going to say that today because we're going to talk to you in December. And December is an organizational meeting, this is a time for where we swear in the new commissioners. We get an opportunity to select a new mayor pro tem, and we get an opportunity to honor someone that I hold very dear to my heart, and I'm so glad that was elected to be put on this board that has provided great intellect, I guess you can say. What they used to call it back in the day is buckeisms, but he's brought a lot of new perspective to this board, and I don't know how we would be, where we would be without that. But we get an opportunity to say thank you in December at our organizational meeting, which will be right here, it's considered a Board of Commissioners meeting date, but it'll be right here in this train depot, which we get to celebrate the incoming and celebrate those who are going to be bugging us from another perspective, I suppose. Okay, unless there's any further, what's going, you looking at me?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Not going to get in the way of that motion.
All right. All right, so unless there's anything further to say, I'd like to go ahead, what's going on? No, you had your chance. Go ahead.
In your food thing, I was trying, I had saved it, but I can't find it, about things that we give for as food to the pantry place, and one item that I do know of that caught my attention was the macaroni and cheese box. People love giving them, but the problem is, is that the people who pick them up, in all likelihood, the one thing you need with that is milk, and the pantries do not provide milk. So just be kind of cognizant of what you, I know some may want to be clearing out, clearing out your pantry at this time, and, or either go to the store and buy a box of mac and cheese, thinking that you're doing something, but it just sits on that person's cupboard because they may not have the milk needed to make that particular item. Thank you.
And if you wish, you can provide shelf-stable milk, Parma Lot makes it. So I buy it all the time. So you could also pair that with a shelf-stable milk. And also be careful about microwavable items, not everybody has a microwave. So without that, can I get a motion to adjourn? Got a motion on the floor, all in favor, say aye. Thank you very much, and have a good night, everyone.